We're going to the meeting, effort city council meeting on December 20th. Could you please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One second left, we gotta keep the field over or we win. Okay, clear call the roll.
Spanx?
Here.
Janutus?
Here.
Blue Hardy?
Here.
Mizek?
Here.
Asbury?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Number motion to excuse Mayor Stan Coche from tonight's meeting. By Spanx, second by Janutus. Call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
I was gonna ask that, do we do want from out? No.
I don't think so.
Our city manager's not here tonight, that's all. Let's see here, approval of the minutes for the budget work session of November 22nd. Any additions or corrections to that? I see none. Can I have a motion for acceptance by Asbury, second by Mizek? Call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Epstein.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
The approval of the minutes of the budget work session of November 29th, 2021. Again, any additions or corrections? And acceptance for approval of the minutes? By, motion by Janutus, second by Spanx? Call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Epstein.
Saunders?
Yes.
An approval of the minutes of the work session on December 8th, 2021. Motion for acceptance by Asbury, second by Saunders? Call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Epstein.
So, Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December, let's see what, December 6th, 2021. Can I have a motion for acceptance by Spanx, second by Janutus? Call the roll, please.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Epstein.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay, we have no old business tonight, so that brings us to reports. No city manager, so Mr. Law Director, Mr. Rattell.
We have no report, I would say, you know, Merry Christmas and have a good, try to have a good holiday. The city manager's, he's away, a family matter, so he would be here, but, and the report.
Thank you. Finance Director, Mr. Graham Bozzi.
Yes, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, hoping they will have a better 2021. We are currently, our tax department will be finishing up sending out the letters, they've noticed everyone and their amounts that they paid in and estimates this year, so those will go out in the mail shortly. We've already done very well this year and our mayor's a follow-up on collections and cleaning up our records, so we've done, the department's done a really, really good job this year and I commend them for that work. This, and this evening, we have Jennifer Holland, our Assistant Finance Director's here tonight, calling some like us. And that's the end of our report tonight, for us.
Yeah, I hope they won.
They win.
I don't know.
They lost.
Okay, that's enough.
Sixty-four.
All right, on to council reports. Mrs. Spanx?
Good evening, everyone. Just wanna give a condolence to the family of a young man that worked with Jim Wagner in our video. Mike Allen passed away this weekend at the age of 33. He did COVID leaves behind a wife and a young son. So, condolence to that. I know Jim was very close to the young man and he was just real nice to talk to and did a real good job up here, so condolence to that family. Hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and we'll keep it short because Frank wants to get home and watch the other game, so we said we'd be kind to be with him since Christmas, so everybody has a safe, family happy Christmas. End of report.
Thank you. Who we got next here? Mr. Janutus.
Well, Happy Holidays, everyone, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Hope everyone does well in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything else to report except for Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year and hopefully everybody's safe and things are getting better in this world because things are getting really tough out there and I'm hoping everything gets going in the right direction. So, that night, as I said, just wish you a Merry Christmas to everybody. Paula? Mizek?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Mizek? Sorry about that.
Hi, first want to say thank you to all my constituents in North Cor, we had another trying year, but we did get through it and wish everybody in the entire city a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, at least not with that, but an año, the whole nine yards, and health and happiness and let's get through this COVID era soon so we can all have a little bit more freedom with our friends and family and those that we love. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Asbury?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. No report tonight, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe, healthy, and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
And last but not least, Mr. Saunders?
Yes, first off, I want to thank all the residents who decorated this year for Christmas. The city really looks nice, some of the streets went all out. It's always good to see people getting involved and beautifying the city during the holidays, so I wanted to give my thanks to everyone who decided to do that this year and hope next year maybe we'll have even more because it seems like it's growing again. I remember 25, 30 years ago when almost all the houses seemed to decorate and then it seemed to die down, but it's picking up again and that's a good thing. At the same time, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and hope that everybody stays safe during this time period. The COVID cases are on the rise in Northeast Ohio, it's one of the worst areas in the state right now, so please stay safe and enjoy your holidays.
Thank you. Okay, on to new business. Ordinance number 9931-21.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Cuyahoga Board of Health, Cuyahoga County Board of Health for the authority and consent to provide Phase 2 stormwater services in years 2022 through 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, and I have a motion for suspension by Spanx, second by Janutus. Motion for our third and final? Oh, I'm sorry, call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Asbury? Call the roll.
We have a lot of limitations.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
What we have is a contract we've been entered into for the last, oh geez, four or five years with the sewer district in Northeast Ohio, regional sewer, and they actually help us promote education and outreach and public participation and involvement with our sanitary sewers and discharges and with the storm sewers of the city. They do fund this program and ask that council approve this this evening so that we can get the paperwork in timely.
Thank you. Clear call the roll, please.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 9932-21.
Authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with National Pump and Process for replacement of pumps with a sand filtration system at the wastewater treatment plant to comply with EPA standards and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Mizek? Call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spanx, second by Janutus.
Looking at this ordinance to the sewer department at the plant, the superintendent has looked at the plant and there was a pump study to replacing desperately, so we're trying to get those into place. He had received bids on this and took the most of those bids for this evening and recommend council passes to get those in place.
Call the roll, please.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9933-21.
Authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Thomas Scientific for the purchase of a laboratory dishwasher at the wastewater treatment plant, also to comply with EPA standards and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spanx, second by Janutus? Call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Asbury, second by Mizek?
Again, the sewer water treatment plant, we have, just like you would have your dishes now, with their beakers and their lab and all the scientific equipment that they work with, there has to be sterilized properly. They're asking to replace an old washer that we had over there for these items and we asked the council approve that this evening so that we can get that as soon as possible. We do have to have clean products when we present our reports to EPA.
Call the roll, please.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9934-21.
Authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Meritech for the purchase of a new copier, printer, scanner for the recreation department and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spanx, second by Janutus? Call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Third and final, call the roll, I'm sorry, motion for third and final by Asbury, second by Saunders?
On this ordinance, we had the recreation department was working to replace one of the copiers that they had, it was on a lease and it was an operating lease, at that point in time, the company did want the machine back, so we will be wiping out that hard drive, returning that, and then in the meantime, we do need to buy a new one, that is what this is for, and it does have some really nice features, that being the booklet finisher, the nice sized hard drive at 45 pages per minute copy, color copier, so I asked council to approve that this evening so that they could go ahead and purchase that.
Clear call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9935-21.
A manny ordinance number 982720, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Bedford during the year 2021 and any subsequent amendments and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Mizek, second by Asbury? Call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Third and final, motion for third and final by Janutus, second by Spanx?
This ordinance is the final update for the year 2021. We had some issues in a couple areas, then I'll just address the major ones. With our, some of our contracts, we had to increase the municipal complex, contracts of professional services, 50,000. Our health insurance fund, we had to increase $205,000, our claims are just very extremely, probably the highest they've ever been. Unfortunately, we have a lot of sick employees and their families and dependents and unfortunately that's going through to the city and we have all these claims to pay. We also have a seal fund, is an inordinate amount of money collected this year by our confiscations by our drug team representing the Southeast area of Cleveland, and in that case, what we have here is close to $850,000 being appropriated this evening as they've confiscated those funds. We've also had quite a few other grants that we had, the Bullock Press Grant came in, so we'll be spending $8,500 on that. We had shop with a cop, one of the Czechs came in, we're just allowing it to be spent as a donation from one of the corporations, flowing it through the city, so we'll be using those funds as they come in for that need. The CARES, Health and Human Services gave us a small $500 grant, but I just to mention, our food commodities this year, we did spend substantially more money this year being that there was more needy in the city, so I have council appropriate another $15,000 to accommodate for the expenses that we had there. In regards to the water and wastewater bond issue that we did refunding earlier this year, we have a slight adjustments to the actual interest calculations and closing costs that we had with the issue this evening, but that did save the city over $400,000. It was a very good project that we worked on and went very well. Again, then we had more claims with the city for $105,000 in health insurance and I did mention the seal. I asked that council pass this this evening so that we can have this put into effect immediately before the end of the year so that we can send that over to the county for final certification.
Clear call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2575-21.
Authorizing the execution of a participation agreement, accepting the terms of the Johnson and Johnson National Opioid Settlement and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Asbury, second by Saunders? Call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spanx, second by Janutus?
This is basically, the Johnson and Johnson was a national settlement that requires 95% of the communities in Ohio to accept the settlement and it doesn't bind us to any specifics regarding the settlement, but we have the opportunity to share in the proceeds if we decide to do so. And the exact terms of what, you know, we don't know exactly what the money's going to be used for yet, but it's probably going to be treatment, education, you know, and help for those that are addicted, but the exact, get the exact, the exact end use of the funds, but it's necessary for us to pass tonight in order to participate in the settlement.
Clear call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2576-21.
A resolution reaffirming and expanding the city's equal employment opportunity policy and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Janutus, second by Spanx? Call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Asbury?
In regards to this resolution, when the city applies for the out justice program grants and so forth, many grants that we have through the county, through the state, through the feds, in line with that, we have to have certain verbiage and everything in our plan and policy of the equal employment opportunity, and in doing so, we have that verbiage in this resolution this evening. I ask council to pass this so that we may be able to proceed with the processing this to the proper agencies.
Clear call the roll.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Sure, we need a motion to accept the planning commission's, well, first of all, Ms. Kelly
is here, if anyone have any questions, I don't believe anybody does, so I think we're just gonna vote to approve it, but if anybody does have questions, she's here. Motion to accept the planning commission's decision to accept the conditional use approval of Ms. Kelly, managing member of DC Kelly Investments LLC located in Solon, Ohio, to operate a residential facility, Class 2 home, an existing dwelling located at 43 Woodrow Avenue in the city of Bedford.
Again, a yes vote is for agreeing with the planning commission.
Vic? I do have one choice.
Go ahead.
The personnel that you will have in this home, they have free rein or are they being controlled or is it just, they live there and they can do whatever they want?
Well, they have to sign a lease and so, I mean, they're sort of situated in a lease, you know, they can't have kids over, they can't smoke cigarettes, they can't do drugs, so they don't totally have free rein.
The planning commission did review some of these things with her and, you know, they have to comply with whatever state and local mandates there are, or state and federal mandates there are in order to participate, so.
Can you stand up to the white somebody a little better?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we did review like parking issues and security issues and, you know, they do, they're not exactly sure, they have a definite plan yet, but they're aware that they have to come up with a plan. But these people are not, not absolutely unfirmed, they're not disabled, they're not, well, they're just, I believe their target audience is a veterans group, a group of veterans to, you know, live together, they can't live on their own, so they need to partner with other veterans in order to survive, so that's, that's the plan.
Bringing back the next question I would have, which you just briefly mentioned, parking. If everyone has their own car, it means you're gonna be parking up the street, and we've had many issues with group homes parking up the streets so that the residents can't use it and in a lot of cases, they leave them out there overnight and they end up getting ticketed, but the residential neighborhood, you know, street parking is for overflow parking here, driveway, not a permanent extension, so I would bring that up, that please watch the amount of parking that you would have in, in the home if and when you get licensed.
Good point, and we did bring that up as well at the planning commission meeting, so she's aware that, you know, that she has to comply, that they could be taken, we advised her about.
Well, I'm just reiterating.
Yeah, that's a good point, so we also went over with her. Did you understand that, correct?
I do understand that, and there is a garage and a long driveway and the max occupancy is five, so your point is we'll take it, understand.
Any other questions?
No, you said your target audience is going to be, or residents are going to be vets. Will there be any kind of, like, counseling or anything altered to them at the home?
At this point, no, I mean, it's possible in the future that we might contract with some service, I mean, that does happen, but right now, we can ourselves provide that and I don't have that point, so potentially in the future, but not when we set up.
I personally, I think this is a great idea. I do a lot of laundry stuff with vets and we've got so many of our homeless people around Cleveland, this area, there are vets and I don't feel like they get enough respect from us, from serving our country, so I'm all for it and I thank you for providing some place for them to live in.
I appreciate that, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one on finances, will it be a nonprofit that's running this agency and will it be rental income from the individuals renting the facility or?
It's not a nonprofit, I mean, we will generate some revenue from it, so, I mean, it's an LLC, you know, tax does not support, so yes, there will be rental income coming in and each one of them will have to sign a lease. Most of them would pay based on the RSS levels or the.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, again, yes, you approve planning commission and no, you don't, so call the roll, please.
Spanx?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Okay, now we come to the hearing of the citizens. Again, say your name, address, where you live, and pre-statement.
Penny Lee Wood, 395 Columbus Street. I just had a question, wanted to know if anybody could offer suggestions? We have a lot of seniors, a lot of inbound seniors that cannot get out to get their vaccines, to get their booster shots, is there anything within the city that is offering to help them to get their shots, to get their booster shots?
Good question, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm sure if you call the rec department, they could, I'm sure Erin, our director, or Mr. Callahan, our assistant, would be happy to address you, they would know better than I, now Mr. Malice isn't here today. I did hear today that the governor deployed the National Guard to lead county to help assist people with getting around and to assist, and I think one of their duties will be to get people to get tested or for shots, and so I think there's a plan in place, but I can't tell you for sure, I hope there is.
So, we don't have one for our seniors?
I'm not saying we don't, I'm not 100% sure, to be honest with you. I would say we probably do, but knowing our rec department, but I don't know for sure, but I would guess, I would say so, but I don't know, I don't know what the terms are.
Because they don't have one.
We could call them, I'm sure if they need some transportation, not the rec department.
Well, when you're talking homebound, you're talking bed.
Oh, I see, you could bring somebody in to get a shot, I'm not sure if we're staffed, I'm sure they could direct you in the right direction.
Yeah, because we haven't been able to find anybody to come in to, there's an agency that will come in for, through Medicare to do a COVID test, there is nobody that will come into the home to do the COVID shots, the booster shots, which means, yes, you're homebound, but you still have people coming into your home, you have family, you have friends, you know, you have nurses or aides that are coming in, so, you know, some of the doctors are blowing it off because you're homebound, you don't need to get the shots or the booster. The VA thinks the same thing, but unfortunately, you have people coming in, so you do need the shot and the booster.
I don't think we have anybody on staff that would be qualified to give the boosters, but I'm sure that we would partner with the Cuyahoga County if they have a program or the state of Ohio if they have a program. I would hope they do, if you're telling me they don't, I would certainly ask Mr. Malice to look into it and I'll tell him your concern and we'll try to, I'll give you a cause at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Moore, before you leave, the only thing I wanted to say is, they have that COVID hotline and also, if you call the Board of Health and ask any of them, they can direct you to the right person, but since you have home healthcare, isn't it possible that your doctor can arrange you with one of his nurses that comes out for your, after your person that, you know, is homebound?
No, he's on, he's on hospice, hospice is, you either maintain, decline, they're not trying to help you.
Hospice is kinda hard to deal with when it comes to something like that because of the state of person.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
For the kits, today I went and bought one for the city for ourselves, they have two, it comes in package, it's two with CVS.
The shot.
It was 25, no, the gift.
Oh, the kit, Medicare, there's a thing online, Medicare will have somebody come in and do a COVID test as if it's a Minute Clinic appointment, they will not do the COVID shot or the booster.
I was just saying, when you said that the kits, I did notice that they did have something, I was out in Streets Row and got one out there today, I was out there, so.
Oh, okay.
But they're, you know, you just check records, they're sold out as fast as they get them in too, so.
Right.
If anybody's looking for those, because a lot of times they'll require two tests, they come in twos in the package for 25, so, at least that's what they were trying, we were able to get some others free, but, I don't know, good luck getting those, because everybody's tested them.
Right, okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, we'll.
And happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you.
You too.
Hello, city of Bedford. How are you doing?
Good time.
Good, good. I'm new here. I'm just saying hello.
Say your name, please, and your address.
Sure. Sheila Das. And I live at 18512 Loma Boulevard in Shaker Heights. I'm your neighbor. I'm a performing musician and have worked at many of your festivals over the years. Recently, the Ohio Arts Council selected a group of 28 of us to receive training in, it's called Creative Aging. And it's a new kind of national effort to fund through the state arts agencies, artists who are vetted, who've worked with the seniors, older adults ages 55 plus. Because of my relationship with Sandy Spinks and the city of Bedford, I asked the city if they would be interested in being the recipient of this, of a service that would provide arts programming to seniors. And they did agree. It's starting in February. It's been funded by the Ohio Arts Council and several other agencies, World House Philanthropies, the National Assembly of State Arts Agencies, the Ohio Arts Council, and in a collaboration part, some of your staff from the rec department will be trained in this Creative Aging Initiative, which down the road, Ohio, down the road will have more funding available to municipalities to execute the programs and in good faith. So the program will be running, just to let you know, starting in February, it's for eight weeks. It's a, okay, here's what it is. This is the fun part. Indonesian puppet, pole puppet building. So I'll facilitate that with students in grades three through five, eight students in grades three through five. They can register through the library. Through the senior department, is it the senior?
The rec department.
The rec department. There's a senior group and eight seniors may participate. These are older adults age 55 plus. So they'll work with me at the library on Thursday nights for an hour and a half. We'll create the puppets. We'll design a play for the puppets to do and we'll have a show. Whether it be virtual, a virtual show or having some people come in. It's so exciting, very exciting. So I'm just here to say, please register if your student, if the parents can decide, of course. Students in grades three through five, eight of them, and then eight seniors. And we already have some seniors signing up. And the seniors register through the rec department. I came here to say all that and also happy holidays. And I'm looking forward to working at the library starting in February. Any questions?
Thank you.
No, I just, I want to thank Sheila because she normally, these programs that she gets these grants for, they're normally, they take them to Cleveland. And so when she approached me, being a dear friend of mine, when she approached me, what did I think about that? I was just, Bedford finally is going to get so many of the Art and Culture Board grants, they won't realize, go to Wade Oval. They go to Cleveland. Very seldom does Bedford get any of these, so it's very exciting that, and thank you, Sheila. She is very good at doing the grant writing and stuff and bringing this, the seniors that I've spoke to, the senior groups are very excited because it gets that interaction with the children, you know, that's kindergarten, the third grade. Working with other seniors, hand on them, doing something that normally they wouldn't do. You know, puppet making is like an old craft, an art form that's kind of coming back to them.
2,000 years old, originally in India, actually.
Yeah. And so I just want to thank Sheila for bringing that and doing all the good work and bringing that to our city, to our children and our seniors. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bringing it to Bedford and not taking it to Cleveland.
We love bringing the program everywhere, but, you know, you're my neighbor and it's a pilot, so why not do it close to home is what I was thinking. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you.
So seniors out there, you know, I'm one too. Am I eligible? Can I, can I do it?
Sure, come on.
And it's fully funded, so it costs the residents nothing. It costs the family, so this is, if you know someone with a small child, please encourage them to do this. And be aware, so in our library, our library offers so much, but this is a great program that it'll be, it's absolutely for.
Sheila Das is a great person to know. She's been, she's in a lot of music groups around town and they're great. She's associated with Groups of American Music and other great organizations and obviously she's very chipper and enthusiastic and a great musician and a real treasure, cultural treasure for the whole Cleveland area. So it's good to see you, Sheila Das.
Thank you so much. Oh, my goodness, right? So good to see you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
It's being recorded too, you could watch.
Anybody else? I see none. Motion for adjournment by Spinks, second by Janutus, call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Hasbury?